Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Griffin Board of Commissioners October eighth point twenty-four meeting. We're glad to have you all here today. Uh, we're going to open up with the pledge of allegiance led by Mr. Brad Wright, bottomed with invocation by Commissioner Truman Tinsley. Please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America. And to the public, for the sake of our life. Thank you, gentlemen, Father. For your day to ask your blessings, God has formed our duties as elected officials. We pray for strength, love, knowledge, and understanding. Help us to recognize the solid code that are presented. Make our solutions fair and just in the best interest of everyone. Help us to overcome our shortcomings, shortcomings and keep us united as a team to work for the betterment of the city and its people. We pray in your name. Amen. Thank you.
All right. I need to get a motion to approve the agenda and the second to amend the agenda at item two A, consider executive session to an OCGA section fifty-one four three B two for the purpose of discussing or deliberating upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring disciplinary actions, or dismissal or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee. We have a motion to approve this. No, we with a motion. Same by Commissioner Tinsley. All in favor of approving the amended agenda, please signal by raise your hand. Seven zero. Okay. And I believe Ms. Ashley Hurst has not made it yet. If she has, oh, perfect. Wonderful. Okay. So I want to make sure. So, uh, under presentations and delegations, we'd like to recognize Ashley first, please. Recognize Ashley Hurst, please department resident at Warth Park as the September twenty twenty-four strongest link in the chain award recipient. Master Patrol Officer Samuel Hurst will address. Welcome. Good evening and welcome.
Uh, please, if you don't mind. Hey, it's all Master Patrol Officers Samuel Hurst. Uh, I've been with Griffin for a few years. Uh, with my wife, Ashley Hurst. Uh, she's been with us since late last year. Um, on the night at the store, as there was a recent hurricane that came through, um, we got to sit home early, you know, get some sleep because we had to work this night. Uh, while I was sleeping, she took it upon herself to go to Kroger with our baby and, uh, buy enough groceries to make, I believe it was around like eighty-five peanut butter and dilly sandwiches. She bought two bags of chips and four cases of water to provide, uh, for all the police officers that were working that night. And she stuck them into my patrol call awhile. And told me when I got to the PD, I had to unload my car. So, uh, I felt like that was pretty worthy of nominating her for the strongest link. Um, she did all that, our, our board, so that's our nominator.
Yeah, we'd like to do two, sure.
Oh, yeah, that's my daughter Izzy. Her name is Isabel, but we call her Izzy.
A little redhead monster. Ashley, would you like to say anything?
Can I say something?
You might.
Hey, um, Felicia and I have been working with Ashley on open record, and as you all know, we have had quite a state large amount of open record. Ashley has done an amazing job. Since she started with us, she is just so conscientious and careful and deliberate in her work. She's very proud of her work, which she should be. She does an amazing job. Felicia and I don't have to worry about when it comes to us, we know it's right. Um, and I, she, she's just done a wonderful job and taken a load off of us. So it's, it's, she's amazing. She, she gets it for that.
Ashley, would you like to say anything? And thank you for the initiative to make a difference.
Um, I just want to say thank you. Honor it means a lot. Uh, I definitely, definitely didn't see it coming. Um, and, you know, I was just doing what I felt like was the right thing to do. Um, I do take a lot of pride in what I do and, um, it feels really good to be uh, recognized for that. So, thank you.
And Samuel, I believe her award is underneath.
Yes, right.
It's right into there. And, uh, Ms. Susan will get a picture of y'all. And thank you both for your service at our meeting. Right. This time we'll have the financial, uh, reports for August twenty twenty-four. Finance Director Deborah Mann Gilbert will address. Welcome, Ms. Deborah.
Good evening. We're going to talk about the August financial statement tonight.
Yes, please.
August is sixteen point seven percent into our fiscal year. And we're going to focus on our major funds. All these numbers are year-to-date. The general fund has recorded two point nine million operating revenue, which is eleven point seven percent of our budget, and recorded six point four million in operating expenses for seventeen point three percent of our budget. The enterprise funds have recorded twenty-two point three million in operating revenue or twenty point one percent of the budget, and almost fourteen million in operating expenses, which is fourteen point eight percent of the budget. Water and wastewater has recorded five point eight million in operating revenue or nineteen point three percent of the budget, two point eight million in expenses, which is thirteen point two percent of the budget. Electric has recorded thirteen point eight million in operating revenue or twenty-one point one percent of our budget, nine point two million in operating expenses, which is sixteen point two percent of the budget. Solid Waste has recorded one point eight million in operating revenue or seventeen point six percent of the budget and one point three million in operating expenses, which is twelve percent of their budget. Uh, year-to-date loss collected is nine hundred and forty-five thousand twenty-four dollars or seventeen point one percent of that budget. And year-to-date, each loss collected is seven hundred eighty-two thousand eight hundred thirty-four dollars or twenty-one percent of that budget.
Thank you. Do the board have any questions? Deborah Mann. Thank you. Appreciate your turn.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, at this time, I need a, uh, most of the seconds to go into executive session, consider, uh, present OCGA section fifty-one four three B two for the purpose of discussing or deliberating upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action, or dismissal or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee. We have a motion for an executive session. Commissioner Ward with a motion. Take it back to Mr. Murray. All in favor, please signal by raise your hand. Seven zero. And if you already see the first minutes, we'll be right now. Do we have a motion to return from the next session or we? Motion with Mr. Ward. Say my name, all in favor. Turning it out in text. Three, two, one. Seven zero. All right, moving into citizens' comment. Citizens' comments. At this time, the mayor opens the floor to comment from the audience. Comments should relate to specific agenda items not listed on the agenda for a public hearing or to your concern with the jurisdiction of the city. Commission meetings serve the purpose of conducting city business on our not safe forum for the unlimited expression of opinions. Subject to the citizen comment policy adopted on February thirteen point twenty-four posted for all for public view, all speakers shall be limited to three minutes, which we strictly followed and enforced. The mayor reserves the right to limit comments. Matters remain to city business, and they refer speakers to the city manager or other staff for resolution. With that being said, is there anybody on my left side, like come before the board? Anybody on my left side? If you could please thank your name and address.
Uh, my name's Danny, Danny Proster. Um, I live at Centinatic Fort Griffin, Georgia. I'm a business owner, just in freshman. I've been a alcohol licensee for over twenty years, and I see that we're changing the alcohol license to homeless agenda. I am confused and concerned about some of these items that are listed on here. I watched a two-hour plus video and I'm still confused at what relates to me and what not. I'm an eating establishment. Thirteen percent of my sales is alcohol. Uh, there are several things that people tell me that I'm not. It doesn't relate to my business. But when I read the documents of the recommendation and what's actually on there, I'm still confused about it. I'm asking that commissioners table them before we find out more answers. It seems like we're kind of rushing through with them right now. I got several phone calls from other businesses around town. They asked me what was going on. I was shocked because of them. I understand a lot of it doesn't concern my business, but I'm still worried about their business and that these people are no longer on the commissioners or city managers in five or ten years. How's it going to relate? How's someone else going to interpret the law and enforce it on them? That's what I, I just wanted to look at it, make sure I'm doing it. What are my new requirements for the renewal? I see a lot of building tickets, different occupancy. I just want to know what I need to have ready by November first. Is that what? If we vote on this, it has to be done this year or through next year? I'm just concerned about it.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Proster. Is there anybody else on my left side, like come before the board? Anybody on my left side? Is anybody on my right side, like come before the board? Yes. Welcome. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Morgan Cavender, one one five Mattic Woods Drive, and I'm the owner and operator of the Tipsy Daisy. Um, y'all have to bear with me, I'm a little nervous. Oh, there are, this, this did come up quite sudden. There are a lot of things that really do, um, change the way that we do our business. Um, there's a lot that I do not understand. I, there's a lot that I don't understand why it's changing too. Um, there are a good bit of things that I do agree with. I will say that. Um, some of the things that I really don't understand is, um, the parking situation and taking care of what's outside. Um, Kelsey was kind enough to explain it to me, but even in how it's written out, it is still very confusing on what we are to be taking care of. Um, you know, I have four employees. That is very nice and very, uh, I'm, and because of that, I'm able to make sure my employees are very well taken care of. Um, I give them the time off that they need. You know, it's, um, it, and adding a lot, it, it feels like we're going to have to add a lot of staff for the things that are put on the agenda. Um, the, I will say the one thing that is a big shocker to me is the late fee being twenty-five hundred dollars if you are a day late. I, last year was a day late because I did not realize that it had come up on, um, the first of November. So twenty-five hundred dollars for a day late is a, a little excessive to me, but, um, it, but also I just want to say that I do agree with Danny. This did come up very suddenly and it, um, there's a lot to digest. I only got the fifty-page report yesterday and I spent all day yesterday and all day today on the phone with people trying to understand it and trying to have it explained to me. Um, I just think that maybe we need a little bit more time on explaining this, especially since our, our, I mean, we have till November first and it's what the tenth, we have twenty days till, um, this is due and it's going to be changed. So, um, I'm just going to leave it at that.
Thank you. Is there anybody else on my right side, like come before the board? Everybody else, all right. All right. Thank you all for your comments and concerns. Moving into the consent agenda. We have items three through nine. Do we have a motion to approve consent agenda as a whole? Commissioner Murray with a motion. Second. Take it back to Commissioner Wright. All in favor of the consent agenda as a whole, please signal by raise your hand. Seven zero. Item ten, submitted to the City of Griffin Board of Commissioner Workshop meeting on September twenty-four, tw- two thousand twenty-four. Commissioner Murray was absent. We have a motion to approve. Commissioner Tinsley with a motion. The second. Commissioner Ward with the second. All in favor, please signal by raise your hand. Six, zero, one with Mr. Murray abstaining. Item eleven is consider a contract when the city of Griffin has debt of max for utility bill printing and billing services. We have a motion to approve the contract. Mr. Murray with motion. Take it back to Commissioner Wright. All in favor, please signal by raise your hand. Six or seven zero. Item eleven is consider resolution amendment compensation. Here what? I'm sorry, twelve, thank you. Item twelve, consider resolution amendment compensation for municipal court judge in response to operational changes required by Georgia Senate Bill sixty-three, two thousand twenty-four and amend the budget accordingly. Commissioner Murray with a motion. Take it back to Commissioner Wright. All in favor of amending the votes of resolution, please signal by raise your hand. Seven zero. Item thirteen is consider the first reading of proposed amendment for Griffin Chapter six, alcohol beverages. Staff attorney, Kelsey Pardon will address. We've got a little important question. Pardon? On some of the, uh, administrative, the changes since the original presentation.
Yes. So before we get to, um, I'm really going to address what is actually on the agenda today. Um, and then I'm going to go through the changes that are outlined in special consideration that were changed from, um, our original presentation, but staff is recommending a change from what was published on, uh, Friday with the agenda, specifically to section six dash two thirty-two, pricing, advertising, and service limits subsection A three. We are recommending that the provision that states the, um, no licensee employer agent of licensees shall sell, offer to sell or deliver unlimited alcoholic beverages during a set period of time at a fixed price, except that private events be removed. Uh, the rationale here was originally so that you're not serving bottomless, uh, anything because state law as well as our ordinance imposes an obligation on the bartenders and the owners or licensees of, uh, alcohol to evaluate whether or not a person is visibly intoxicated. However, after speaking with some of the business owners, as well as speaking with some of you, uh, with regard to some of your concerns, there is another provision in here that prevents or limits the ability of that, of, of those individuals to be selling, um, like pitchers, for example. Um, and we believe that there are enough safeguards in place for the bartenders to still be able to operate under state law. So if it is for promotional purposes, an establishment wanted to offer a, uh, an unlimited drink promotion for a specific cost, the onus is still going to be on them as it is under state law to evaluate whether or not a person is visibly intoxicated. So unlimited does not mean that they are allowed to drink until they die or until they pass out. It is unlimited within the bounds of state law, which is someone who is visibly intoxicated. And so that, we think that that is best left to the bartenders in that regard. So we are asking that your consideration for the first reading, uh, be with the change of section six dash two thirty-two subsection A three removed. With regard to, um, just the, the item in general or the amendments in general, we did present a summary of proposed amendments based on staff, staff's recommendation at the workshop on September twenty-fourth. Following that workshop, we did receive questions and feedback from commissioners as well as business owners related to some of those proposed changes, including the proposed changes to days and hours of operation for on-premises consumption, the requirement the bars hire off-duty officers or deputies after seven P M. and the increased inventory requirements related to back to liquor stores. So based on the feedback, staff has modified those proposed amendments that follows, specifically with regard to days and, and hours of operation for on-premise consumption. If you recall, we were recommending cutoff of midnight. Um, that, yeah.
Give me the second one, you read.
So I'm, this is actually from the special considerations, but I can reference the specific section in the code of that where you're referencing.
Somewhere she's reading, four.
Yes, but I can, I can pull up the section of the.
Got it.
Yeah, so under agenda item number thirteen, under special considerations, there's bullet points.
Is it under the red flag?
No, that's just a part of the item, but if you are looking for the specific section number, I can give that to you as well.
All right, I get it, I get it.
Okay. Okay, so, um, if you recall, our original proposal was actually to, um, have that reduced from one fifty-five to midnight. Um, however, based on conversations and speaking with, uh, some of our establishments, uh, we are now recommending that, uh, on-premises consumption dealers, including restaurants and bars, be permitted to serve alcohol on Monday through, through Friday until one A M. following day, on Saturdays until one A M. on Sunday morning and on Sunday until midnight on Monday. Currently, our ordinance limits, uh, service on Sunday to midnight on Monday. Um, so that, that is not a change. Um, this proposed change really only changes the hours of operation by fifty-five minutes. That's one fifty-five A M. to one A M. Um, you are permitted to, that in your last call, the all alcohol beverages have to be cleared by one thirty A M. And the only other difference is that bars would have to close for business one hour after the final fill. Um, based on recommendations that were made by, uh, other business owners, we have also added an exception for New Year's Eve. So establishments will be allowed to serve until one A M. if January first falls on a Monday, because otherwise they would be cut off at midnight for the Sunday rule. Um, and like I said, the only other significant difference in that regard is they would have to close for business, a bar would have to close for business one hour after that fill time. The next, um, change that has been removed from the presentation, um, and is not uh, in the amendment, uh, is the requirement for off-duty officers or deputies in bars. So we did receive feedback that the hiring off, off-duty officers every night from seven P M. until closed business was considered prohibitive for their business. In light of those other changes that we're recommending, um, including the placement of security camera systems at bars and slightly decreasing hours of operation from one fifty-five A M. The one A M., we believe that we can remove this recommendation and still maintain our goal of safe and orderly business operations in the special entertainment district. However, the proposed amendment does provide that the licensee, uh, any licensee who is safe, who is sanctioned or issued a probationary license due to disorderly conduct or an above-average need for police intervention due to activity on the premises may be required to hire off-duty city of Griffin police officers or supporting sheriff's deputies as a condition of that probationary license, uh, or sanction. And lastly, with regard to the increasing of wholesale inventory, our proposal originally read fifty thousand to hundred and fifty thousand, and it's specific to liquor stores. Um, based on the size and certain limitations of many of the cities and establishments, which is not something that is, um, that other jurisdictions ha- have to really deal with, um, we are recommending a, an increase, but we are recommending that rather than it be up to a hundred and fifty, that it now be a hundred thousand. Um, if you recall, as part of that presentation, the other jurisdictions that we were looking at had, you know, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for liquor and then seventy-five thousand dollars for beer and wine. And they were all significantly higher than our, um, limits. Um, but we have to be, we, we have to be cognizant of the fact that state law does require that you hold your, uh, inventory onsite. And so some of the smaller building establishments that we currently have would not be able to store a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of, you know, liquor, beer, and wine. Um, but I, I do think it should be noted that a hundred thousand dollar wholesale inventory for liquor is something that is it pretty easily achieved these days with regard to pricing. Um, so after additional research and consideration, all other recommendations other than what has been noted here that were presented by staff at that workshop have remained substantively the same and have been incorporated into the proposed amendment before you. Um, we have also been asked how long the current licensees and businesses would have, would have to become compliant with these changes. So while this ordinance will become effective immediately, the businesses with a twenty twenty-four alcohol license would be grandfathered into the end of the current license period. However, licensees seeking to renew for twenty twenty-five would be required to comply with chapter six as amended, so that would include our qualification requirement. Um, section five of the proposed ordinance requires the city manager offer probationary licenses to any renewal applicant in twenty twenty-five who, uh, requires time in which to come into compliance with these amendments. The conditions for the probationary license have to include a specific action plan, so if they need a particular period of time to vet a security system or get a security system on board, or if they need a period of time to potentially, uh, remove for, for package dealers who are in this covering that are on the windows, and they don't want to evaluate the best method to make that happen, and it may potentially involve a building contractor. We want to make sure that they're provided with that term. So the, um, that, that section specifies that you would have to have an action plan with specific tasks, and there would have to be a set date by which they must come into compliance, but that cannot extend beyond June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Um, however, the city manager shall not be obligated to offer a probationary license to any applicant who would not qualify for renewal due to a history, criminal history or background check. Um, and none of those changes, none, none of those have substantially changed. In fact, our qualifications have become easier than what they currently are under the law because currently your, your spouse had to qualify for, had to have background checks technically. Um, if you were to change the license fee to your spouse, all those people would intended to qualify. So a lot of these things are housekeeping matters, and I think that may have caused some confusion with regards to the administrative factors, but all the requirements of qualification are substantively the same. Further, all twenty twenty-five, uh, applicants and licensees are still obligated to obtain a license. They're obligated to apply in a timely manner, and they're obligated to operate in orderly, in orderly fashion during the days and hours of operation, which are allowed by law um, and, and by the amendment. Uh, I would like to note in case any of our license users are unaware that by resolution of the board, the application period for this year has been extended to December first. So this would not interfere with that December first extension, so they have until December first to apply for renewal. Um, and then again, we will work with them with regard to the need for time for coming into compliance with any of those other factors.
And in future, renewal, say November thirtieth?
In, in the future, yeah, I believe it's November first. Yeah. November first.
Allow.
I'm a call to judge.
I'm sorry, get everybody's order prepared for the new year coming up.
Yes.
And then if you want to go over the financial impact, license fees will increase.
Yes, um, so the changes to the license fees, I tried to break them down as comprehensively as possible. So eating establishments, wine tasting rooms, and hotel licenses for malt beverages and wine would increase from five hundred to seven hundred and fifty. Private clubs and fraternal organizations licensed for malt beverages and wine would increase to three fifty, from three fifty to five hundred dollars. Um, and distilled spirits would increase from one thousand to fifteen hundred dollars. However, the, the, um, the distilled spirit license will include malt beverages and wine. Previously, it did not, so these had to be two separate licenses. Um, alcohol beverage catering permits are going to increase to twenty-five dollars to fifty dollars, but they will remain at a rate of per day each event with a free day maximum for those events. And the fines associated with violations for, for violation of chapter six were all increased to a maximum of a thousand dollars. And that's the maximum, not the automatically, it's not a minimum.
And, um, Ms. Cavender, I brought up a couple of, um, questions about parking outside clarification. Can you hit that real quick?
Yes. So let me actually pull up the section that she's referencing because that has been a concern for a couple of people that we have spoken with. And if you recall, uh, Mr. Whalen actually brought up that we have to be careful in how we enforce because obviously we are in a public downtown where people have the ability to, um, disturb the peace who may or may not have been, uh, associated with that business. So I want to give you the intention of this subsection, um, and that is specifically for if an establishment, and, and many of you may have experiences or seen this, um, if an establishment has individuals who are fighting on site, they may tell them, you guys have to take it outside, or they may kick them out. But businesses are often reluctant to call law enforcement to deal with an issue. And so they are just pushing the issue outside and then, and then basically sitting on it. Um, the other issue is individuals who are over-served and then who may go outside or be outside. The other issue is individuals who are over-served and then who may go outside or be outside. If you see a problem, report it. If you know that there is an issue and you know that it needs to be addressed, we're wanting to add the responsibility that a, this establishment is maintaining the peace for individuals that are frequenting their business. As I mentioned, with regard to bars in general, a lot of other jurisdictions do not have them. The main primary function of a bar selling seventy-five percent or more of alcohol is to intoxicate people. You are selling alcohol for the purpose of people to be intoxicated and to have a good time, but at the point that we're reaching the level where it's disturbing the peace, that's where the concern is. So that section is section six dash two-two-nine disturbances of the peace, security of premises. And it specifically says agents, managers, employees are responsible for keeping an orderly place and shall not permit any employee, patron, or other person to cause a disturbance acting in a loud voice, dress, loot, or obscene content or obscene conduct or practices in the establishment. They shall be responsible for monitoring parking lots and other areas outside around the establishment and prohibiting patrons and other persons standing, sitting, mingling, assembling outside the life establishment in a manner that causes or contributes to disturbance through their illegal activities. So I think that the concern is they're, they're concerned that there may be people who may not be frequenting their establishment that are out on the streets that could become their responsibility. The intention of this is genuinely, if you see something, say something. So if you know that there is something going on outside of your establishment that is against the law, if you know that you have people who are taking alcohol out there or acting in a loud and boisterous manner, for you to contact either the emergency nine-one-one or to contact the non-emergency number for law enforcement so that it can be broken up and it can be addressed. This is a, this disturbance of the, the peace provision has been taken from other jurisdictions, and it's something that is commonly instituted when you have a pub-type area. So, and by that, I mean, our jurisdiction has a downtown where you have businesses that are right next to one another, where we have sidewalks, we have traffic that is flowing into the street. So if you know that, yeah, people are waiting outside of your establishment, that you think you're off empty, and they're spilling out into the street, that's something that needs to be addressed, to say, you guys can't loiter out here, you can't spill out into the street. It impacts their business, and it's for the benefit of their business as well. And while I'm on the topic for things that are the benefit of the business, I know we did have some complaints with regard to security cameras that would be required in bars specifically. I will let you know that I, I genuinely believe that that is the best thing that we could institute here. And I would like to remind the businesses that they are much more cautious than they were when you just had an analog security system. So I speak with your, you know, your other establishments, your other neighbors, see if they have a company that they've worked with, that they have a company that they already utilize. And then also speak with your insurance companies, because the placement of those security cameras can also impact your rate. So it could work for the benefit of that business, so it's for their protection as well. And hand-in-hand with that, if your security camera footage is showing that you've done everything in your power, including going out there or trying to do this, or if this person had no association with your business, and your security camera footage is showing that, you're not going to be held accountable for disturbance of the peace. Likewise, the standard here is that you knew or should have known. And so you have a responsibility if you knew or should have known. That's my burden to prove in court. That's anybody else's burden to prove in court, is whether they knew or should have known. And that goes for employees as well. So I know that a lot of our managers and owners do their best to train their employees and hold them accountable. However, often there are rogue employees who take, who, who don't take things seriously. That is not something that's going to come back on the property, you know, the, the property owner is the business owner. If they're showing that they have done everything within their power, if they had no reason to know that their employee would have gone red. And that's just, you know, I hate to word it that way, but it, it, there's a legal standard here that if anybody were to take action against this, they would be required to prove, whether that's me or any other solicitor that is appointed to this position, they would be required to prove that they knew or had reasons to know.
In regards to the twenty-five hundred dollar late fee?
So it's not specifically twenty-five hundred, it's fifty percent of the actual filing fee. And that is commensurate with other jurisdictions as well. The main difference that we have now is that the fee was not, you could, you were required to apply November first, but there was no late fee until, unless you didn't pay by January one. The issue is, we have to report to the state if, if a person is late. And so we were spending a lot of that Christmas holiday and Thanksgiving holiday making sure we had, we were chasing people down. I think that if you know that the date every year is November one, and you know that in order to apply, you have to pay that fee, we, we have to, we have to hold the deadline somewhere, whether it's November one, one day late, or, or, I mean, really, the grace period is the entire other three hundred and fifty-four days of the year.
In this, in this first year, is there going to be an exception, or is that?
For the late?
Late fee.
So the December, December one would be the obligate, would be the date based on the, their resolutions you guys instituted. And they are required. Yes, and they are required per section five to apply timely, so they still would have a responsibility to apply by December one. However, that does not mean that they have to have everything, you know, they, they need to try to have everything submitted to us. But if we do need more information or more documentation, there is a ninety-day period where we can request the document, that documentation. What we're really looking for is that they're making an effort to apply, and we're not having to track them down around the holidays.
And then Mr. Proctor, concerns about interpretation of law. We follow basically state law, so could you address?
This is heavily, heavily, heavily.
Interpreted by one person.
Yes, this is heavily influenced by state law, and I, I apologize to our business establishments who are confused, but I will also note, this is one of the most confusing areas of law, the state of Georgia and the entirety of the United States has. Alcohol code is very, it is entrenched in legalese, and I have done my best to make it where the provisions that need to be referenced by our establishments the most, such as our days and hours of operation, to, to make it where that legalese is taken out of it as much as we possibly can have it taken out. But unfortunately, there is, unless you're sitting down with an attorney who's going to, and, and even then, you all know, you may ask me a legal question, and I'm going to tell you the answer nine times out of ten, it's a ten. These are very fact-intensive circumstances. So with regard to interpretation, I cannot promise that something is going to be interpreted the same way every time, but I'm not the enforcement mechanism to judge it. I'm not the enforcement mechanism. The, the appellate, the hearing officer that is appointed here by the board, which is the municipal court judge, is the ultimate person who's going to make that decision. I can tell you what my interpretation is from the city. Another solicitor may interpret it differently, and ultimately, it will be up to whoever that hearing officer is at the time, so fly the law. But I can tell you that there are certain standards under state law, including knew or had reason to know, a reasonable person having reason to know, and a preponderance of the evidence. And those are all obligations that are on the city that we have to hold up in municipal court for every other citation or violation we have.
Ms. O'Connor, do you have any comments? First, do you think you'd like to?
I've covered it very well, so unless anybody has any questions, we can chat.
Mr. Whalen, do you have anything to add or? Board members, do they have any questions or concerns you'd like to ask?
Well, we have a second reading on this.
So if there is a second reading with any other subsequent changes, if you would like to make any other changes for us to look at, if we can present those and you present, have them on first reading, then at your second reading, consider for adoption. Just to.
Say that again.
So if you have any other suggestions or amendments or things that you would like to change, we can look at, look at those right now. We can go through section by section if you have specific sections you're concerned with to have those removed. If they're not substantive in nature aside from removing particular sections, then it can proceed on a second reading with those modifications that you make tonight. However, if you're making more substantive changes, or if you make a change at the second reading, it will have to come again for an additional reading before the board, potentially two additional readings before the board for adoption. So I'm just letting you know the logistics there.
I think, well, I guess I can only speak for myself. I would like to make sure that the concerns or the changes that's brought before us tonight, we have had an attempt to speak with, you know, the business owners, they're hearing it, we're hearing it, and to say, okay, we're going to follow on with tonight. And then they have some changes or something that they still don't quite understand, then it'll lead us right back to that second reading, but I'm asking for some, maybe some substantive changes or non-substantive changes, I'm, I'm, I'm just not sure.
Okay.
Ms. Ward.
What's happening?
Well, I would, make sure there are no questions or comments, Ms. Ward.
Okay, I got one. Taking all the advertisements off the liquor stores. Law states that they can't advertise, but that's all right.
There are billboards that, where they can advertise.
Advertise, can't do anything else except for that type of thing.
And I believe social media is also an option.
Social media, but people don't, some people off that tweet that I know don't look at social media, the older folks. So they, the advertising's there. Plus, that takes, if you have to take everything off, what about shelves that's in front of the window? Now you're taking away floor space, taking away what we can keep, what they keep in the store, because now you would lose some of it, space. So what's the necessity? Can they board up the windows?
That would be an option. You would have to see, it would depend on your establishment. So if your establishment has other points of ingress, egress, our fire marshal as well as fire department would have to look at it as well as our building official, but one option would be to board up those windows. But the main concern is from a, a fire and police department perspective, being able to see into these establishments. A really good example, I got here really early this morning, is Cass Aldy. When you're going down sixteen, because of the lighting that they have in there and the fact that they don't have advertisements in their windows, you can see into that establishment, so that if someone were to be robbing it, or if there were, you know, a fire that were going on in there, it's going to be something where our police department is actually going to be able to see it. They're actually going to be able to, to, to witness that and, and intervene. And so that's part of the concern, and I understand the concern about floor space, but one modification could be modifying the building itself so that the, the windows themselves are not, you know, subject to that, that blocking limitation.
So we're putting a burden on the business owner then.
That would be one interpretation.
Good.
If they have a question on this side. Ms. O'Connor, if we did table it, is there a possibility to have the first reading on the same day, like at the morning workshop? Have it called me in the evening?
They are not allowed.
You can't have to, okay.
You have to extend it into November. What you can do.
That's what I was, I wanted to suggest, since the changes are take place December first rather than November first. I, I think table would be a January first.
Well, they have to, you know, January first, that's five.
Yeah.
So a motion for we can go in, table this, don't they cleaning? You know, one thing.
I make a motion to deny.
Is it denied?
To deny.
To deny.
The whole thing?
The whole thing.
Feel a motion denied for second, second.
Second.
With a second deny ordinance. Any questions or concerns?
So, yeah, I got a question.
Yeah.
So if, I, I think we need an alcohol ordinance. If we deny it, when we do, and we still have it on our, bring it back on our. There, there's no time specified of which to bring it back. I'll bring it back two weeks from now if you want to.
If any of the provisions that are in the current ordinance would stand, one of those is that they're not allowed to be open on Sunday. So a lot of businesses are, they can't, you just understand that if you deny it, that will remain, we will have to enforce that.
So if, if we deny it specifically, the downtown businesses that are open on Sundays.
That are barred.
That are barred, bad, smoking margaritas, tips a day that you wanted to open on a Sunday. If we deny it.
Not the way the current ordinance is, but it is very confusing, it's a, it's a, it's like a graph to figure that out. But currently, they are not supposed to be open on Sunday. So if we deny the ordinance and so we bring it back, that will have to enforce, not to deny.
Okay. But this only applies to bars.
No.
See, because if you have a restaurant downtown.
Myrtle.
I, I.
I, 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 I think that this should have been cleaned up before it came to us in a public hearing or a vote. It's too many loose ends and strings that are not clear. I think every, instead of comments telling us, well, this is what we proposed, but now we changed our mind, and this is what we don't, we're going to change it to. When it, if you bring it to us and before the citizens, why couldn't you have had a, a, a company for the citizens, the, the business owners at the time in to work with you to try to figure it out in the beginning? When you, if and when you bring it back to us, it should be clean, and we should know exactly what we're getting, what they're getting, what the consequences are. We should know everything.
Ms. Ward, if you'll please address me with that, that's my, my problem, not Ms. Pardon. And I, that's fine, I don't have a problem with that, if we need to table it.
Yes, I'll do it.
Okay.
But I bet her on rescue.
Not, no, no need to deny, but to resist you.
Motion to deny.
We have, we have a motion of second deny.
So now if we, motion to deny, we got businesses that will, that will be affected.
And I plan to vote denial and then come back with the table.
I think.
So we have a motion, so we have a motion at a second to deny. All in favor of denial, please signal by raise your hand. Ms. Wardman, Pardon, and Ms. White. All against like sign. Fourth read, got to move a motion. We have a motion by Mr. Tinsley, the motion second by Commissioner Murray to table this. All in favor of table, please signal by raise your hand. All against like third. Fourth read with Murray, Holberg, Tinsley, and the board to table. Table, okay. Thank you, starting to forget.
So when we table this, 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 for, um, we can't schedule for our second meeting in October.
October.
And that'll be first reading?
I want to hear it here and actually come up and let you know that, one, I'm eight months pregnant and could leave at any point in time. But also, if what, from what I'm gathering, we need to potentially be doing a, a town hall or a group, grouping of those, you know, those businesses, if that's what you're wanting.
We'll have a workshop on three seconds.
But the workshop will be presented.
Or we'd have to schedule something separately, which we can do, but it won't be here for six, seven, nine, oh, ten.
Okay. So I just want to be mindful of that, that if we have, if we don't have the ability to be able to do that, it may be longer. I don't want anybody to think we're delaying in that regard, but there's, if we're going to, you know, tackle actually doing a, a town hall or a workshop specifically with the businesses themselves, for them to be able to share ideas with staff, then I want to make sure that we can give them the full attention and that there's not a gap or five, six day lead material.
You're good. Thank you so much. All right, moving to item fourteen, consider ratification of the emergency declaration of state emergency for Hurricane Helena and resolution for immediate emergency measures. So a motion to ratify Commissioner Murray with a motion, do we have a second? Just for a second. Second by Commissioner Tinsley, all in favor, please signal by raise your hand. All, seven, zero. Item fifteen is consider resolution for section two one ninety emergency service. The different code of order says ratifying the purchase of a runway fault seventy-nine horsepower submersible pump in the amount thirty-nine thousand five dollars from Goworth Weems Inc., single source. Then a motion to prefer with Commissioner Wright with a motion, second by Commissioner Murray. All in favor, please signal by raise your hand. Seven, zero. Item sixteen is consider emergency resolution retroactively approving issuance of a request for aid pursuant to the July twenty twenty-four agreement with Service Electric Company for emergency electric system assistance in the amount not sixty, sixty thousand dollars in response to high workload demand due to Hurricane Helena. Commissioner Murray with a motion, we have a second. Second, second by Commissioner Wright. All in favor, please signal by raise your hand. Seven, zero. Item seventeen is consider ratification of the first supplemental emergency resolution terminating the expiration of a state of emergency for Hurricane Helena, pending the immediate emergency measures activated on September twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. Commissioner Tinsley with a motion, do we have a second? Commissioner Murray with a second. All in favor of, please signal by raise your hand. Seven, zero. All right, item eighteen, consider resolution approving the home and patient of the in-house compensation study proposed new pay scale that is needed to remain competitive and aid in retention of recruitment effort. City manager Jessica Connor will be.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, based on a couple of the conversations that have been had over the last few days, I wanted to provide you a few of the timeline that we've been through since the spring. It's actually started with our budget conversations in March related to the fact that we weren't sure that we would be able to do anything with the millage rate at the time of our September adoption. We realized that we were able to roll that back in September, and so for March, that we did not do for that. The county, we knew was going to make a presentation to their board of commissioners to increase their pay scale on April first, because when they did that, and I was provided with that pay study, they actually used the same people. um, I was provided with that pay study, and they actually used the same consultant that we used in twenty twenty-two, which was Evergreen Consulting. Um, their pay study was sent to me on April two ninth, twenty twenty-four, and immediately, um, staff, myself and Miss Woods included, along with our consultant from Evergreen Safety, and started looking at different jurisdictions that the county also used, but also comparing the counties um, with what their pay was. We knew, as you all remember back in twenty twenty-two, we started ours in January at our annual gold workshop, by the time that we adopted that in September, it was already out of, out of date. Um, we were already behind the scale that we had started with in January, so we knew that it was going to be us. Um, we knew when just looking at the counties that we were behind. We also looked at Conyers, Huffington, Fayette County, Fayetteville, Henry County, LaGraines, McDonough, Rockdale County, South Fulton, and Treats County. Um, when we did all of that, we are about ten percent on average behind. Um, we met with you all in July, and then again in August, to let you know that that figure was over two million dollars at that point, but it still was not finalized. Um, we worked shops the item at the same time that we did the milit rate and found that if we were able to pull the money for the general fund, which is mostly the admin departments as well as police and fire from our Georgia Fund One account, and that we could fund the general fund out of that, and then the other utility funds that are funded out of their own account. So at this time, we are asking that the pay scale be adjusted, um, and it is proposed in your, um, agenda item with four different items. I'm happy to go over those if you must be like. The total cost at this time is two million, six hundred and sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents. Um, that can change depending on who may leave this week before we get it implemented, um, by the next pay period, which will be October twenty fifth. If anyone takes any questions.
When we, when we did our budget, we couldn't really give, we didn't have the money to give our employees a raise. And I remember you coming back saying that, um, we had, uh, you had to go back to the department, had to work, work it out. Where is this money coming from?
There's a Georgia Fund One, which is where our sales tax money is kept, and it's an investment account that has twenty-six million dollars.
Twenty-six million dollars?
Yes, ma'am.
Why didn't we know that money was there?
It's on your monthly financials every month.
Okay, that we have twenty-six million dollars?
As of today.
How long, how long has, how, have we had it?
The Georgia Fund One account?
Uh-huh.
Several years.
Several years.
Yes, ma'am.
So when we were asking for, to find money somewhere to do recreation pools, black bags, or the children and, and the community, what, what were, what didn't we know?
You have never been knowing the full money from your Georgia Fund One.
I, 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 I have several questions about the calculation, how you determine, um, uh, the numbers that you're, you're raised, for instance. Um, I'd say this, I'm a new police department, the general.
Yes, ma'am.
I think you told us the, the pay for a police officer, our starting pay was like forty-eight, forty-nine thousand.
Yes, ma'am.
And you told us that the, for the sheriff's department, it was about sixty thousand?
Fifty-eight four.
Six, what?
Fifty-eight thousand, four hundred.
Fifty-eight, four hundred.
Mm-hmm.
And you, you're wanting to raise up the, up, tha- that particular area to sixty?
Sixty-one thousand, five hundred.
So from forty-eight to sixty-one is like, what, twelve thousand dollars?
It's a large increase, but we're behind, and so I don't have a clue. It's about a ten percent increase.
You have other questions or comments? Do we have a, um, motion to approve the conversation?
Like a most table. Or further, yes.
We have a motion to table.
Yes.
We have a second. Good second for Ms. Curtis, any discussions? All in favor of table?
Oh, oh, all right, so if we table this, we, we would be able to bring this back?
There's nothing else to discuss, so I don't know what else we need to talk about. I, I don't know what else to provide the information wise, so I will bring you the same presentation on the twenty seconds. But I don't, I don't know what else I can change. So have there been no questions asked from any of you at your workshops? Or in any of the discussions that we've had? So there's really nothing else to talk about. I've made a recommendation to you based on the hard work from Miss Woods, that our, that Stacy, our consultant did. This is where I think we need to be, is it puts us a couple of thousand ahead of the sheriff's department, it needs to be there. So this is the recommendation that's pointed.
If, if we table this, the implementation, what happened, your, your time for implementation is October twenty-fifth?
Yes.
So if we run it back on, on October twenty-second?
It cannot go on the twenty-fifth, that's not how the pay series works. It would be sometime in November, December. I'd have to get with Miss Woods on that. Mind you, these employees know that the county came there the second of July first, and I don't think one of them walked out the door to go there. They stayed with us because they're loyal to us. So you can table it, but that's not giving them a very good recommendation of what you expect from them, in my opinion.
My comment before we vote, yeah, I'm gonna vote for denial, I believe we've worked hard and diligently, we have the funds available, how they're, of our employees, sort of hard work, for what they do for our community. So I'll vote for, I'll vote against tableing.
Okay, well, I'll put it by then.
Yeah, do you have other questions? All in favor of denial, please, table, sorry, table, please signal by raise your hand. Ms. Curtis, this is Ward. All against table, please, please raise your hand. Five, two. To, um, to dial, or tableing failed. We have a motion to approve implementation. Mr. Tinsley with a motion. We have a second by Mr. Wright. Any discussion? All in favor of compensation presentation, please, people, by raise your hand. All against, like sign. Five, two, Curtis, and, um, with Ward against. Moving into the CMA report.
Um, thank you for believing in our employees, and I'm gonna leave it at that, my thinking. It's not that we don't believe.
And I have no comment, thank you. Ms. Curtis, I'd give first.
Huh?
Would you like?
Actually, it's not that we don't believe in them. We believe in our police officers. And we want them to make this one of everything. And we want them to stay safe. And, um, if, if you don't have anything to do with not believing in our police officers, they do a great job of protecting our citizens. I wanna make that clear. And that's all I have to say.
Ms. Murray?
Thank you, everybody, for coming. Uh, we do believe in you. And, um, the hard decisions up here to make are not easy, so, um, just know that we, we support you, and, um, thanks for letting me serve you.
Mr. Tinsley?
Early voting starts, I think, the, uh, fourteen, just looking up, huh? And also, I'd like to give a shout out to our linemen, went down to Cleveland, Houston. Hope they're ready to the World Cafe, I remember that, that was a good food, so thanks for doing that, appreciate you. Always nice to stay safe with the folks, and, and our mutual aid.
Mr. Ford?
Oh, yeah, thank you, everyone, coming out, and I want to thank my playing partner, Mr. Brian Hay. Um, played me to victory, I, I wanted to sit in Griffin, golf championship first place, and nobody, you know, nobody recognized it. When I was in the first flight, I mean, I guess that's, they didn't, they didn't recognize it.
Was that the last one?
Next to the last, but hey, a win is a win, so again, uh, thank you, and again, we, we can tell some such voices up here, it's, it's never easy when it comes to this, especially as we work up here as a team, and I want to make sure everybody is heard. Um, everybody's concerns are heard, uh, but our employees, I mean, it is your most precious resource is, is taking care of your employees, because you gotta, we gotta take care of our citizens, and I, I don't think anybody of any seven up here, um, feel that way that they don't want to take care of the employees, and I want that part to be missed on anyone, I want anyone to think that any of us, anybody sitting up here, I'm, I'm speaking for everybody, that we don't, we, we don't want you to have what you deserve. Uh, there were just questions that out there that were, um, not answered, or you don't feel sufficiently answered. But I think making, just taking care of first and, and going back and getting those answers is, is way more important. So thank you again for your service, God, too.
That's right.
Nothing.
This is what.
Mm-hmm. I just want everybody to understand, when I, when I use the police department as my, uh, start point for the increase, it's not because I'm in y'all, because the increase is for ev- the raise is for everybody, increase is for everybody. But when we make decisions like this, if, if anything goes wrong, it comes back to, to us. I still have a bunch of questions. I have, I still have some things that I'm not comfortable with. And I hope that in the future I'll be able to get the answer because I still, I, I'm, I'm still real uncomfortable with not the increase, because I believe that every, all of the employees deserve the increase. But my question is, there are some other things in the city that needs to be taken care of, could have been done. And I have questions about, okay, where did this money come, is, is this what we're doing with this money? Is that legal? I, I, I spend a lot of questions, but it has nothing to do with not wanting to take care of our employees.
Thank you. Want to commend city management staff for your storm prep with Hurricane Helena, thank God it went east of us, but I thank you, y'all were very, did an outstanding job. So this is very proud of you, appreciate of your hard work. Wanted to, um, give a shout out to Jason Chance and the Environmental Council, we'll be doing stream cleanup on the Saturday, October nineteenth, we're meeting at the historic city hall, we'll be out, meeting at streams, so we'd love to have you kind of join us wear your rubber glue boots and come have fun. The downtown council mainstream program is putting on a feast at East on October twentieth, so Sunday afternoon, from one to three, the tickets are available at twenty-five dollars a piece for Buckner's, underneath the trees. And wanted to give a shout out, maybe your question, Nate, Christopher Arf Island.
Yes, yes. Remember, I have some class in nineteen eighty-eight, Brigadier.
Um, he had his, um, commissioning ceremony as a Brigadier General, so we've got, got three-star General Stephen Townsend that's in Griffin High School. And now we've got General, um, Christopher Arf Island, who is from Griffin High School.
Griffin High School class in nineteen eighty-eight.
We have class in nineteen, a lot of your classmates are there, and stand, so, uh, we're very proud of him and his family, their service to the country. Again, thank you, staff, thank you guests tonight for bringing your opinions, we appreciate you, and I'll be around afterwards to talk to you. Real motion to adjourn. Mr. Wright with a motion. Second by Mr. McCord, all in favor, please, go ahead.